A clock, um please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or deletions? I know we have a bunch of deletions.
Yeah, and I didn't list those under the deletions column because
Okay.
it was, I felt so weak.
Oh, that's fine.
So, I have um the additions of the, one addition of Lake County mandate resolution that we continued from yesterday.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment?
Fisher Alves is asking for the way to me.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's a personal problem. Tiffany might have something to say.
Morning Tiffany.
Maybe not.
I don't see a hand raised or anything. It looks like she's on mute. If if there's uh public comment stays open during the entirety of the meeting, so if you have anything, please just raise your hand, let Melanie know and we'll uh we'll get you in there.
I'll check on that for you. I'm sorry.
Um, I don't need any time zone.
So. I guess with that, first item of business is Lake County mandate resolution. Um.
Fisher Alves on yet?
No.
We're gonna open this up too.
I guess we could, oh yeah, we do have to do that, but that's at ten fifteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I guess we could pass the minutes real quick. Uh we've got meeting minutes from August thirty first and uh September twenty second, special session. Entertained a motion on those minutes.
I make a motion to uh approve the meeting minutes from August thirty first twenty twenty one and what's, let's see this.
Combined session.
Combined session on September twenty second twenty twenty one and the
That was a special session.
Oh, for the, for the special sessions on September twenty second.
Special session, right. Let me start over.
Okay.
Uh I'll I'll make a motion to approve the August thirty first twenty twenty one combined session and the September twenty second special session as presented.
Um second that motion. Motion's made and seconded. Um any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um so the, I guess, are there any liaison updates?
Uh. This week is the National Coresia Wildlife Fire Strategy Workshop. I've been participating when I could, a lot of good discussion there. I think some of the country is a little bit behind where we're at here in Lake County as far as uh working cross boundary. I think we found out this summer that uh that's all good work, but we need to continue to do more of it. And uh it's gonna take a a really strong effort again and a big push by all agencies and partners to uh make sure that we have defensible space and uh prescribed fire that will help us with future welfare. So that's been a good discussion.
Do you have uh recent figures on um exactly how many acres the bootleg fire burned over in Lake County? It was like a hundred and twenty six.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty six, three hundred and change actually burned off in Lake County. So uh that was a good stat that the uh Forest Service helped us come up with. And uh we'll be using that for some of our statistics.
Sounds good. Do we have a, I know we're waiting for the after action report on a lot of these fires. Do we have kind of an estimated number yet of how much land has actually been burned over in this fire season of all the fires put together?
Uh no, I know it was over nine thousand.
Yeah.
And per repeat was ninety one thousand. So, or twenty six thousand, yeah, thousand on uh bootleg.
Oh shoot.
What happened?
Nothing, sorry.
Okay.
So, we've had our first year of uh fire this summer and uh we've got a lot of uh salaries to do, both on private and hopefully on federal. And we'll see what that takes.
Yeah, so.
I had the, but the, our meeting muted still.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Yeah, Tiffany just let me go.
Oh, good, perfect. Thank you Tiffany. Um, no worries. Um, the, is that, is that Mark? Yeah, Commissioner Albersen, welcome.
Thank you, I'm here.
Alright, good having you. Um. I haven't decided yet whether or not I'm going to be uh headed over to Salem on Monday. Um it's kind of depending on some things at home uh for me personally, so because I would probably have to either make the journey up late Sunday night or very early Monday morning. Um, and it kind of takes me out of Lake County for the whole, for that whole day and potentially Tuesday. So. Uh moving down to the next item on the agenda, um Lake County mandate resolution, um. I went over Douglas County's again last night, particularly looking for a way to kind of work some of that language in. I really haven't changed much. Um I had had a hard time trying to find a way to insert um some of the language or points I really liked about Douglas County's um uh resolution. But inserting any of that language or um what I think the points they were trying to make really changed um the nature of this resolution and I felt like it was bringing it was almost trying to put two resolutions into one. I don't know if you have any additional, if you guys have any additional thoughts on this?
I'm good with uh what we've presented so far, but uh I'll defer to Commissioner Albersen.
I I'm fine with it too. Um, the only thing is the language on receiving, I think the language needs to be re- uh changed to instead of receiving a shot, you receive a vaccine. Uh, and just change the vaccine and shot.
Okay. Yeah, actually, um Commissioner Schulenberger caught that as well. Um, I did change that. That's, that's a good point.
You have the first version, I think, Commissioner Albersen.
And and that was the only change really I think I've made since then. Um, I think when I was typing, not looking at the keyboard and just moving along with my thoughts and so I, I think I used that in several places and I went through and I did change those both. But yeah, good point.
Well, so I'm good with it. Um, we might need a a further action later, uh once we're built. And then we'll go from there.
I agree. Um, and you know, thinking about this last night, I've already kind of started drafting a resolution that I think that will probably be needed going forward. Um, and because I'm anticipating the need for a secondary resolution, um I think I don't want to be repeating things, so the things that are in this one won't be in that secondary and so I'll have a clean slate to work with. And I think a lot of these points that we've been talking about and looking at what's coming out of some of the other counties and what they're anticipating, I think it'll be a good time to kind of address those things. But at this point, you know, yeah. So, uh with that, I guess I'll uh I'll entertain a motion on this then.
Would you like to read it?
I I can read it, I'm sure.
I'll read it for the record.
Good. I can, I can, I can do this more than that, yeah, absolutely. Um.
We got time.
Alright, um. In the matter of the potential of a state of emergency due to the foreseeable lack of adequate resources to respond to basic health, safety and emergency services. The Lake County Board of Commissioners on today's date as the local governing body have and will continue to take into consideration all facts and impacts to the public well-being of Lake County residents. Whereas, the recent surge in hospitalizations and public health concerns due to SARS COVID two and the B one six one seven two Delta variant of SARS COVID two has further strained many providers and core public safety services, including first responders, emergency services, healthcare providers, educators and related staff. And whereas, in an effort to address this new surge, the state of Oregon has attempted to further increase the percentage of Oregonians who are vaccinated against SARS COVID two by imposing vaccine mandates for certain sectors, including education, healthcare, emergency services and state workers. And whereas, while some Oregonians have received a vaccine as a result of the state mandate, other workers subject to the state mandate have left or are expected to leave employment if they are not able to comply with the state mandate by either accepting a vaccine under coercion or filling out a request for religious medical exception form. Whereas, the Lake County Board of Commissioners anticipates that Executive Order twenty one dash twenty nine mandating vaccinations for state executive branch employees, OAR three 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 dash zero nineteen dash ten ten mandating vaccinations for healthcare providers and staff and OAR three 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 dash zero one nine dash one zero three zero mandating vaccinations for teachers and school staff will have a detrimental impact on the delivery of healthcare, education, public safety and emergency services within Lake County. And whereas, ORS four zero one three oh nine authorizes the governing body of a county to declare emergencies when they exist within the county and to prepare for the care and carry out any activity to prevent, minimize, respond to or recover from such an emergency. Whereas, Lake County Board of Commissioners anticipate a state of emergency will exist within Lake County due to the immediate foreseeable lack of adequate resources to deliver basic health, safety, education and emergency services if the state mandates are not immediately withdrawn. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lake County Board of Commissioners requests that the state of Oregon immediately withdraw its vaccine mandates or to provide an exception for rural and frontier counties to prevent further erosion and departure of providers of core public services, including first responders, healthcare providers, educators and related staff, emergency service providers and public safety providers that are essential for the safety and well-being of Oregonians living in, visiting and traveling through Lake County. So.
Um, do we even wanna get the sheriff to sign on with us?
Um.
The other candidates didn't.
Nobody didn't. I could do that. Um, how about if we uh approve today contingent upon uh the sheriff being willing to sign it? I can make that, if that's uh consensus of the board, we can alter this uh um resolution to include his signature as well.
What, what's the, so the sheriff's already made a statement?
Right.
And I think it's been put out there.
Yeah.
So what's the advantage of him signing on this?
I guess it just shows unity, but um it's, it doesn't make or break it. Um, this is obviously from us, but it does show the unity and support from the executive, um the chief executive of the county as well. Um. But I could, I could check with him. If he, if he doesn't want to mess with it, um and he's just comfortable with his statement, we can stick with our three signatures if uh the board is comfortable. Does that sound agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Albersen?
I'd agree overall with me. Um, I think that the reason why I want the sheriff on there is because this is going to affect him a lot too. Um. And to show the unity of our law enforcement and everything else, um. I don't know, it's up to how you wanna handle it.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, real quick, we're respectful of the time. The time is ten sixteen. I'm gonna really just jump real quickly um and open up the uh hearing for ordinance fifty two uh dash one zero three um pertaining to uh Lake County clerk fees. Um, okay, so going back to this, uh I guess uh I'll entertain a motion on the resolution. Uh, real quickly though, before I do that, we need to assign this uh a new resolution number. Um, Melanie, can you help with that and putting in?
Hi.
Well, I don't think this is the right resolution number. I think this is, is this, is this the correct number?
Uh huh.
Okay. I just didn't wanna make, I wanted to make sure that we weren't doubling over another resolution or anything like that. Okay.
Do we wanna hear any comment?
Yeah, public comment's open at any time.
There is that, okay. So I'll make the motion to uh approve uh our state of emergency uh resolution twenty twenty one dash zero six C as presented.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Um, discussion, uh my wordiness is, it, it's only uh in the matter of potential of a state of emergency. So, it wouldn't be actually declaring a state of emergency quite yet.
Yeah, 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 right.
So. Just a clarification. Um.
Do you want me to restate the motion?
No, just for the record, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Uh. With that, I'll, any further discussion?
Just that this uh resolution is uh sent to the governor's office so that they will see it soon as possible.
Absolutely. And I imagine the best way to do that would be you're probably going through uh Annette Levy and maybe her chiefs of staff. The, the governor's chief of staff. Okay.
So, as an emergency, just since we're still talking about this. The law is if we declare an emergency, which I know that we're not, we're foreseeing an emergency, the governor has to respond to the emergency within twenty four hours or, or one of her people has to respond. If, and if we send it the way it is, as not an emergency but a declaration, she doesn't have to respond to it at all. And so, uh. So I just wanted to bring that up.
No.
Um, I don't think we'll probably get a response, but. Anyways, I'm glad it's real.
I'd like to think that these are mounting up on uh the governor and uh we know that there's lots of them out there from several counties.
Yeah.
I think it's important to uh make sure that Lake County is uh representing our, our folks and that uh we're stating our potential urgency.
I totally agree.
And and you're right, she doesn't have to respond to us. Um. But it really would be a good show of faith if she did. Out of the only thirty six counties that she has in the state, if she were to respond to them when they pass resolutions pertaining to the potential of an emergency. Um, I think it would be very proactive of the governor to take that into account and uh reach out to us and and have that conversation because that's really what we're asking for here. And I think in the past, you know, as I pointed out yesterday, we were able to start that conversation with her pertaining to the prison. And I think uh it would be good again and wise for her to do so in this matter. But you're right, she's not obligated necessarily, but I think she does carry a certain obligation to being a good representative of the people. Um. Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear. Are you on mute, Mark?
No, I said aye.
Oh.
Me, me, me and Mr. Schulber said it same time.
Oh, okay, I didn't catch it. Sounds good. Alright, motion passes. Thank you.
Good work.
So, with that, um nothing else really on the agenda other than our timed items. Our next timed item is uh Deputy DA discussion. Um.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I've been around, there was the laptop purchases.
Oh.
That's still unmarked on the back page.
Right.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I missed it. Sorry. Go for it. Thank you.
That was what I was going.
Let's do that. So.
It is correct as presented. I did verify.
Okay, it is correct as presented?
Mm-hmm, I just didn't listen very well.
Sounds good.
So we do have a few gaps.
We have a few that are needed, yeah.
Okay. Alrighty then. Uh with that, I will entertain a motion on the computer purchases.
Hmm, that'll find it.
Yeah. I can make the motion. Um. Is is Aztec handling, AppTech, sorry, is, are they handling the entire purchase process? Okay. I'll go ahead and uh make a motion to approve the computer purchases for a total fiscal cost of eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Mac Tech.
Yeah, from Mac, Mac Tech.
I'll second the motion.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine with it. Um, but can you make the motion, chair?
Yeah, I, I did make the motions.
But can you as the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I can, I think I can. I just typically leave it for you guys because it's easier for me.
Okay. I'll, I'll do that.
I had the papers in front of me though and so I was just trying to make it a little easier. But yeah, I, I can make the motion, but um. Uh motions made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, perfect. So, with that, I guess we can recess. Is there any other liaison updates that we'd have to share? We kinda went through them. We can recess for five minutes until the, ready for the DA discussion at ten thirty. Um, we can, I'll uh close the hearing. Do they have to close the hearing, correct, before we recess? So I'll close the hearing for ordinance fifty two dash one zero three. Um, no public comment given. And I will uh recess the meeting until ten thirty for the next five minutes. Thank you. Time is ten thirty. Um, we'll reconvene uh for the Deputy DA uh discussion. So. It, go ahead and ask. Is Mark there or Mark doesn't work? No, Mark's there.
Yeah.
Oh, who's Tiffany? Uh, remember the fellow?
Oh.
So, yeah.
So, um, I brought this subject up to you about a month ago or so. I, you know, I don't remember the date or whatnot. Uh. We got to see uh an intern work for us this summer. Uh, and I think it proved to be uh helpful to the district attorney's office. Uh, to say the least, I'll let you follow up with all the, the comment on that. Uh, posed the question, uh maybe it's time for Lake County to look at a permanent position of a Deputy DA. Uh, and uh kind of weigh some of the pros and cons of that. I thought, and so I'll look forward to you, uh district attorney.
Well. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh truthfully, yes, it's, it's past time. Um, when I got here, we, there was still a little bit of money. Or maybe there's a lot, I mean, I don't know what there was. But um Mike Beugan was able to come in with the contract or whatever and he was with me till for, so like for six months, which helped, um obviously. Um. I, I honestly don't think there's any. There are stacks and stacks of, of stuff that I inherited that finally have been pretty much gone through. But a lot of these are still in warrant status and different things, but a lot of old work that was never done. Mike was able to um get a lot of, of us, get us closer. Then, and even when I first got here, that, so that first year, they had just been through whatever to try and get to keep a position and was not approved. So I talked to Marley and Marley was like, well, we just did this and, and they, we don't have money. I'm like, well, that makes sense. And so then the next year was COVID. And then this year we just uh rolled through with it, but like you said, um Nick was able to somebody help him, like two, three, but he was with me all summer. Um, his birthday, we went and dug up a body. And um true. And uh, just the, having someone else that, one, and, and even then, to be quite honest, the way it works with a certified lawsuit, which is what Nick still is and hopeful of, um it's on my license and I'm supposed to be at everything Nick do. And I, I, well, I missed one. I missed a thing with Judge Bunch because I was in uh doing grand jury and Judge Bunch was on the video and, and uh Ms. Warren was able to handle that for me, but that's the only thing I think that ever happened. I wasn't there, uh with him. So. Um, the only reason I mention that, someone that I didn't have to fall, or that, that I didn't have to be there would really help. And because it, it really helped just having him, even though I had to be in the same room, he handled stuff and um it was very, very, and to be quite honest, we have to to get things to move forward in a lot of cases, we have to do a lot of things that necessarily we have to kind of chase evidence down. They kept, with two of us there, we had time to do that. A lot of times I, I don't have time. It doesn't, it's done. Um, so.
So you think it would be advantageous then to be able to have another permanent DA position for you, I mean?
Oh, yeah. And the only reason, just circumstances of, um, the only reason never asked for it was one was the timing of they had just gotten shot down, and the other one and then uh everything seemed to be quite a mess last, a year ago when they first shut us down for going, so. Yes, absolutely.
Good.
And we're, just for reference, we're very unique in that. So figure Grant and Harney, they split a judge. It's now Judge Racho, but it was Judge Kramer for twenty years. So, Douglas spent two day when it was Kramer, he generally Monday and Friday he would be in Harney. Two of the other days he would go to Grant and figure both Grant and Harney have that, they have half a judge. I have a whole one all week long and it's me. When you look at Baker, they've got a I'm sure their population's more than ours and to be sincere, they run a lot of stuff through justice court, which we don't have. So it's, it's, even though it's one judge, but it is a one judge county, there are two judges.
Right.
So, there's, it used to be Max Triplett, he didn't have the judge, so it's. So there's, it used to be Max Triplett, he didn't have the judge, so it's Young Greg Baxter, and yes, two judges. So to handle that, so that it's everything can be done that should be done, honestly, the way it is.
Yeah.
To be sincere.
So I know you haven't been in this position that long, but can you kind of give a little bit of history about the workload now versus maybe the workload five years ago?
Why, until eight years ago?
Uh, I mean, what what's the uh what's what's going on in Lake County as far as uh crime and?
I think the best example.
That'd be serious crime.
Um, I think the best example, and it may or may not answer your question, and I don't honestly know how long it's got to be out, unless it was I don't know, yeah, one officer involved, I've had two. And um, one that was one officer and one person, and then one that was three quarters of the cops in town. I handled the first one, I uh had DOJ do the second one, just because of just how, yeah, those, they're all guys who was close or fairly close with, and it was just appropriate, but that's an example there, and then to be honest, something that I didn't pay much attention to, so murder two, there didn't, there used to be a thing called murder, and um then they came, come up with ag murder and a murder two, well, that came in, that law went in in October of when I got here. Never paid much attention to that. It's just like you, right when that, we may very well have been one of the first murder twos filed in the state because bang, I have a guy, Ranor's neighbor up in Northlake, and so that, and then we had a full-on, um you know, one of my treatment board guys gets shot right over here, and so we had that murder, and and luckily with that, um you know, we had I don't know, took up this room for a couple of days, and there were I don't know how many officers came over from Klamath, and then luckily they were able to keep track of, figure out where the guy was, the shooter. And I think actually Jake went and Rachel went down in Dunning, down Cal, uh Nevada, so. But that was just because of the huge number of people and then the huge amount of evidence, so. This huge amount of evidence made that case easy to deal with, when you have, they'll have a huge amount of evidence.
But that requires someone to go through all that evidence and everything else and to
Yeah, it's a
pull it apart for a court.
Yes, it is a binder, it's it's a binder and that doesn't count the video.
Yeah.
So, and other than that, um, as far as like number of I know, just in talking to Mr. Stetson, since you opened up across the street, um, my number of filings are are closer to what he was doing. I know, I can get to you the exact numbers, I I know they were a lot lower um in between them and I, but that's what I'm, my understanding, I don't know that, I believe that to be true though. And then, just for example, at the, even at the moment, I have two, so when they do um indigent defense contracts, they change them when I had, was involved with it. They they do them as full-time employees, so I've got two
Which contracts is that?
Indigent defense.
Indigent defense.
Yeah, so the guys on the other table, so guys at the other table, Dave and um Jim and Jeff, I have two full-time what's considered two full-time employees locally, lawyers. And I don't know that Ron was right, Ron, uh, Holland believed that the estimate was they needed to have four here. I've got five different attorneys that come over from Klamath, just yesterday I had one come down from Ben, so at least I've got three, the two that are local and a third that I deal with every, every day, and there's just us, just me, yeah, so it's, yeah.
We, we had some discussions, or you know, I've I've flirted the idea, not sure where I stand with it. But if the Deputy DA were to come on board, could they have any uh extra duties, such as county council?
Yeah, the irony, or I don't know if it's irony, I don't know the right word, just this week, the notice came out for Morrow County, now Justin Nelson's the DA in Morrow. And um, Justin and I and Dan Premus, who's the DA, and Umatilla, we all graduated together. So I stayed in contact with them, and when I believe the history of Morrow County, there wasn't a deputy, it was kind of same thing, they brought everything in-house, they got a deputy position. They just flew um again, and it's kind of weird the way they do it, they have the deputy position and um a stipend to be county councilor that the person who has the deputy position can decide to do or not do, um. My only consternation with that is I've done a lot of civil work, um, not like compared to Nick's father, uh, well, I don't, we had cases, actually his uh legal secretary when he moved home, went to work for my office, so, and became, and she's now a, I think she's superintendent of Dale Schools.
Okay.
But um, so I've done a lot of civil stuff, it's uncommon, and I've done very little like employment stuff, so I it's not undoable, because like um, Tim Callahan, who was the DA forever in um Carney, even when he stepped away from being DA, he kept the county council part of it. What happened, my understanding with Tim is, um, I I might call it a stipend, and that's wrong.
Just like, is it a lot of the time hours per week, or like per month, or something that he spent, that he could spend as county council, or?
I think they're actually, um, with him when he was DA, my understanding is they
Okay, is it like a retainer?
Well, most of the county, uh almost every county I'm aware of pays a supplement, um, so there's X number that they, to the DA. Like, for instance, the guy in Hillsborough that, I don't know if you've seen, the there the most money ever spent on a campaign, and now he's having to do it again.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the reason is, Mike, I want to say he's like two eighty, so it's there's a hundred and seventy grand supplement-ish from the county to have him be DA. Well, same was with, my understanding of how it worked with Tim is there was the supplement paid which, and that was him to be county council. And so whatever that amount was, which I want to say is like ten grand, um, when he quit being DA, they made the deal that he just stayed county council for that amount, so that he he was able to stay in his office and stuff like that, um. Not sure how it would work, honestly, and I'm not, the only consternation would be the lots of I I I've never done, so I figure like Nick, for example, if he's or somebody else just out of law school, they've never done either, and so that would be a little worrisome, um. Now, Mount Here has a full-time county council, Stephanie Williams. Um, and you probably know all this, Grant uses a guy at a, over by Roseburg, because it's timber stuff. He has a lot of timber knowledge, and so that's a lot of the things there. I, Tim, I don't, I know Carney was looking at going out and having a bid and, and on Timmy, I'm not even sure Tim's always in line. Uh, and honestly, I don't know Baker or Morrow, it is the Deputy slash Justin, or it's county council, Justin, so.
So it could be done, and you know, maybe even if uh we were to look at maybe I suppose having a county council, a secondary county council even, for a certain subject matter, or even if they have experience in it.
Or even just uh somebody set aside that
We could utilize them.
The big dog of employment law that would be, could be on it, yeah.
I wouldn't probably be practicing that too much, working as a Deputy DA, you know, he'd be working criminal law and so forth with you, but have, if he had expertise in this other field, if we were able to use him as county council, it would be a tremendous help to us.
And, well, and it's interesting the way Justin, I I suppose Justin wrote it, but they're talking about what because it is a really good opportunity, and the, I don't know, it was a, the young person that was in that position in Morrow that was deputy and county council, was able to move on to become city councilor. And that, you're not going to jump from one of those. If you don't have a background in all of the county council type of areas, you're not meant to be able to do that. As far as jump from, the the opportunity to have that experience is what allowed that person to become city councilor. Return to the city, city attorney.
So, couple more questions, um. If we were to uh go this route, do you anticipate that we would most likely be looking at a candidate coming out of uh law school early, early in their career? And what is the average of of these Deputy DAs there in these other counties? What's the turnover, how fast do they turn it over?
Well, see, and that's interesting you bring it up, so I was just talking to so a lot of people, if you don't have any ties to Eastern Oregon, if you, uh, they'll, they'll bounce, they'll go to Portland. And I know that, like, Umatilla almost constantly has an opening, and one of the reasons is they get, you know, you get six months or a year, a year or whatever, and a few trials, then they can get in the, they're put in the doors in another county. Have to base it on Mount Here quite a bit, their their turnover was pretty high, Baker is the complete opposite, those uh people, at least for the most part, one of them left and he went to La Grande and became chief deputy there, and he's in Alaska now, um. But for the most part, they it's, they're pretty stable in there, um. Carney, uh, the deputies, I don't know who the new deputy is, the the deputy became the DA when um Dr. uh Joey Lucas decided to, uh, he's in, go to med school. Grant, it has a great situation where um, young lady that, uh, her pool avoid, who, uh, the ranch out of Prairie City. She worked part-time and has her her family, uh, so that, I I I almost expect her to be that until she comes to behave when she wants to, um. I personally think it's local ties, or maybe not local, but at least am I, that you've seen
What else over there?
Yeah, the part of Oregon that's not Oregonian.
McDonald's.
Yeah.
Sorry. Comment? Yes, oh.
So I'd like to share the vision in my head. It's a little different than yours, I would like to have county council available as a priority, and I use county council a lot, so if I could get an hour, an answer within like twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, I I would like them to have a priority for the county though, and then help you and like have some flexibility between the position, um. Because I think that's going to be important to serve both duties equally. And I'm not opposed to having someone do our union negotiations, I think that could be a good idea. Especially with our current county council, he has so much experience and history, I think it's important, but I just want to make sure that we're not forgetting about county council and kind of making that our lesser priority, I want to make sure that they're both equally served, as as someone who uses county council a lot.
And it's easy to say twenty-four hours, um, I I disagree to say that, but
Yeah.
if we're going into a multi-day trial that, I mean, I I don't know, I can't swear to that, I mean, I could say it all day, but
And that's gonna be fine, like, like being crank about it, you know, I mean?
I mean, definitely would be a goal, and definitely would be the 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 standard, or the expectation, um, it's just
Yeah.
It depends, you know, it, although honestly, it's just like, I I wasn't kidding about the the, you know actually, the first or the last officer involved, it was New Year's Day, ten AM, I'm in Klamath, I get the call, drive over. Fifth of July, I get the call, uh, Mr. Warren was able to meet me there and we need the
Yeah.
I, I, hopefully nothing like that comes up and and then absolutely, we can do it in twenty-four hours.
Well, that's what makes me a little nervous, because I don't want them to get tied up on a case and then have our county staff come up that's urgent and needs, not always emergency um response, but sometimes we need him, and he's good about that right now, you know, getting back to us and
Yeah, well, the reality once they're rolling, whoever they are, this, they, um, I wouldn't necessarily be in court with them every moment, and it's just we with Mr. Warren, yeah, was able to let him do ninety-nine percent of everything, and and I just kind of sat there and, um did, did a couple of witnesses, um, but just even if we have something really gnarly going, it doesn't mean we're both in, would be involved, but
Could be.
Another murder, so anything like that, absolutely will be us both. Anybody like you, Grant.
Does Commissioner Albersen have his hand up?
No.
Well, yeah, there's, there's like the
Some, there's, there's a hand.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Nothing else.
Okay, alright, um, well, I was, you know, if we're going to pay for a secondary position for the Deputy DA, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do away with the current county council, but we could end up with a secondary county council, which might decrease the site that that, or the um retainer that we currently pay our current county council, renegotiated contract or something. But have a secondary person that we utilize for, say, a specific subject matter, uh, whether it be land use or something other. But if we're paying for the secondary position already, I guess the negotiation would be with you and your office as, you know, it, what kind of time would we be able to allot for county matters? How often, um, would we, and what's the priority that we could set for the count, for county matters? I mean, obviously, we see the huge need for the DA's office to be able to have this secondary position to take the pressure off of you and your staff. I don't really foresee us using him, uh, using him a ton, especially if we also have, like, Mr. Bailey, our current counsel for union matters, for a lot of the issues that you need him on a daily basis for, um.
Well, I mean, there there are other reasons it would be, I I believe it would be the three of you, or whoever are the insurance time. Some decisions that are made perhaps look good when we do it and must present it to you, but they ultimately end up criminal cases for me, and what I'm thinking of honestly is road bait issues. Very, very seldom should they probably, well, very, very seldom the statute didn't allow it, or very seldom should it be done, but there's been a lot of them done that have resulted in the traffic gas goes somewhere, then these people get all sideways, and some, I I don't, some input from of what the repercussions of things, what seems like a minor thing would be, be nice to have.
So recruitment at this position, do you feel like there would be some difficulty, I, you talked about Eastern Oregon, Western Oregon. Uh, and then with this stipend, let's just call it a stipend now for being county support in some manner for county council, do you think that entices the job just a little bit more, where you may get a few more uh applicants?
To be honest, we get this, prove that, I mean, I know I can get a bill this. If that didn't work out.
Does this stipend help at all?
I can't imagine it would.
And we're asking if it's possible for them to do the work, but, but then, or do we have a recruitment problem too?
I think historically there has been, um, but it's really shocking to me that Nick was, is one of the three, I think you told me there's two others. There are actually three, three Ls is what we call, first year of law. There are actually three, three Ls is what we call, first year of law school, second year of law school, third year of law school. Basically, you, you show up, the, then next June they'll, or June, July, they'll take the bar. There's three in town. There's, there's two besides Nick, which is shocking to me. I don't know that they'll, they'll stay around like, you know, but I mean, that's like very local people. Little lone folks over in Clamath that I don't, off the top of my head. But yes, I think recruitment would, has historically been an issue. Specifically, I I have my hopes and I don't think that would be the case with this.
Is there any other discussion? Correct? Marlo, do you have anything?
See, all about the recruitment stuff.
The last time, um, it sounds like Ted's been talking to somebody, but the last time that we did this, um, Jay helped us with the job description and we did, it took us a little while, um, to, you know, when some people got here, they didn't like the area. We didn't have dry cleaning and McDonald's and, you know, um, enough, enough of that kinda stuff. But, you know, this day and age, it, it might be, um, a little bit different and, you know, we, I worked very hard last time getting out to, you know, all of the different DA's offices, like how he got his, all of the colleges of, um, you know, of individuals graduating soon or, you know, they still, um, get the notices and so we worked fairly hard to, um, recruit last time. And I believe that we, we interviewed three. Am I right, Jay? I believe there was three that actually came out.
I think recruitment's always gonna be an issue with this position.
Yeah.
Find somebody, I mean, you're probably looking at someone who's going to be less experienced. Younger in their career, probably not have any civil experience, land use matters, um, you know, the, the, the things that, that we need. And, and then there's gonna be turnover. We historically, Lake County has been a stepping stone for these types of jobs where, you know, you just, you need, you need some time in as a deputy DA or as a, you know, with, with a title and then six months, eight months of the year, you can move on. Relay that into a job where you want it. So, we end up, we do end up getting used in that way unless they have local ties. So, that's always critical for us. If we can find those, great, but I we have talked about this in the past and in talking with prospective, um, people who might be interested in, in that kind of a position. We hear the same thing from all of them, that you can't combine those two positions. Just the experience, the knowledge is, is vastly different. Um, I'm kinda with Melania, like, you know, we, of course, Ted has a whole different perspective because we need county council who's responsive and knowledgeable and expert in these areas. Of course, that's our emphasis because that's what we need. I'm just not sure we would get what we need if we try and combine that with a deputy.
Appreciate it.
I agree.
Well, quite honestly, I don't foresee like a brand new newly-minted attorney. I, of course, and maybe it's not what you want, that I would, you know, and I would have time because I'd have somebody to do stuff. I have a lot. I've been in front of the, but I've, I've done all kinds of land, land use stuff. I, I point out employment because that's just something I have at that. As far as the regular stuff, um, I would, that I have as much experience about, just about anybody. As far as land use or, or those things, so, um, and I that, that's what I've seen. I don't, because I don't see, um, some new, new amended personnel to, they're gonna have a hard time trying to prosecute a, I don't wanna say UAS over the train, but something at level on those lines, um, and if you look, uh, back before and I don't even know who Dave B to become DA, that was county, that person was DA and county council, so. I don't, but I do know Morrow does it and Heffner's not, whole heck, well, I need your place in, like, I, and I think Heffner's in Morrow, I don't know if I'm supposed to. So.
I mean, yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
But I, I think, you know, in the past, I think the argument for having, you know, the DA being the sole county council for the county has been a conflict of interest issue because they're typically someone that live here, they'll be, you know, prosecuting cases up there and then they'll know people, everyone knows each other and, and, uh, also be representing the county in matters.
Well, that wouldn't change with the deputy.
It wouldn't necessarily change, but if we have all, as well as all our other county.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did understand.
We still have that ability.
Well, and quite honestly, it's like when I asked DOJ work. Um, Clamath and I, um, all do some stuff for Clamath and Clamath will, uh, uh, Eve Costello will come over and do some stuff for me. Kinda, a lot, a lot of the same way. I would think that the other, the person that you have retained be a lot like, go on DOJ and say, wow, God, six years.
Well, and we don't wanna take away from your work. You're, you're elected to be the district attorney and, you know, we're we're obviously seeing the need, that you need, uh, potentially some support there as a deputy DA. And help your work like whatnot. And I think it would help the people of Lake County, so. Any other comments, questions, Jay?
Ted has some unique experience coming from the civil side, you know, that might be a great fit for him. But we don't like to create positions that are built around people. We like to create, create the structure that works no matter who's in, in there, you know? And try to find the right people to fill those positions, but.
And along those lines, I it's a little different once you get Carney and then you get, like, you're locally, we're basically just one attorney anymore. It's not typical to have someone that I was pointed out to be by one of the judges. I was literally the only person in Mount here, Carney, Grant, um, Baker, that did both divorces and dependencies, which to me they go hand in hand. Dependencies DHS stuff. But it's, it's uncommon now, uh, Mr. Headland does that, but kinda turned it on a game in town, so.
He has to do it.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, it's, it's not typical for a criminal, uh, defense attorney, uh, to have a civil background or vice versa.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
So, uh, I get where we're, we're trying to go totally. I understand that there's a need. And my problem is, uh, Ted is a state employee and is there any way that the state would have any, they bring on a deputy DA? It seems like we're having to pay for a state employee, really. So, that's where I'm having trouble.
Statutes actually set up the opposite. Uh, it's set up where, um, it, it, literally, there, there's one statute that talks about the county shall provide, like, you know, machine, I, probably have twenty on some.
All the resources.
Right, yeah. So, there's that statute and then, um, actually I looked it up because I thought it was the statute that would apply to this is a district attorney shall appoint deputy, so a district attorney shall have the same qualifications as district attorney, subject to the direction of district attorney, has the same functions as a district attorney. Oh, here we go, read the wrong one. The county or, or a court or board of county commissioners may, may empower me to appoint one or more district attorneys whose compensation shall be fixed by the county um, court, blah, 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 and paid out of county funds. So, um, it, it's basically set up the opposite where they, to me, they make sure that there's a DA, they're, uh, they'll agree a DA or a DOJ, but everything except for paying for that person's on you, honestly, so.
I understand the statute. I just don't think it's right because that, that, I guess that doesn't beat Jack.
Well, there's a lot of things I don't, I, I agree with you. That's my, like, boy. Feel that way every day, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Alveson, you know, uh, we have talked about, uh, in the past, there's been some potential funding avenues, some grants, different things like that. Uh, when we talked yesterday, we talked about previous grants that we've gotten in the past, things like that. There's the victim advocate round a little bit.
There is, absolutely. There are different ones and there's different, you know, times for them and, but they it's kind of, they'll come with a cost. Um, like if you take a valor, uh, Violence Against Women, for instance, uh, grant, you can, though we don't do this, well, I would love to do this, but you can't do a, uh, have a deferred sentence program. Like in Clamath, they have a real robust, um, so, uh, basically domestic violence, husband, wife kinda deal. And that person can, whoever is the perpetrator can go through a program, get the case dismissed. It's what I was used to, quite honestly, it's what they do in Mount here and, um, we don't have them. And we could set it up, but the only reason I mention it is, like, um, Kelsey in La Grande, Union County, they purposely don't take that, um, they don't provide a deferred sentencing option because they take money from, uh, Violence Against Women's Act money and as part of taking that money, you agree not to do certain things, which is fine. Maybe that's what we wanna do anyway. But, um, they do come with strings.
You gotta weigh the pros and the cons.
Exactly, exactly. And, or, and we can get it, but I guess there's a mention there's a grant writer, somebody that person can found it out, get a lot of work.
We'd have to determine though, that's their best needs or, or that's what we want, right?
And I'm not overly, the domestic violence one may be, I don't think it's this fall, I think it's next. Say, and then just where the timing is.
You know, just, just thinking back on, on this. You know, Jay, you made a good point, you know, we don't build position, uh, positions around people. You know, we build positions, we try to find good people to fill those positions, basically. But in essence, you know, wanna try to avoid building a position around, say, a student. You know, someone that is, that doesn't have the experience and everything else. We build something that we think will work. Something that we'd like to see and then we try to find those good people that could fill that. And maybe that isn't going to be a student that's just out of law school that also may not have ties to the community because that's also what we're looking for.
Yeah, just.
So, maybe it's someone with more experience and background.
Well, and I, I think, um, you, back in the day, a couple of years ago, you spoke with Brian. But I figured Ryan Hughes, who's the DA in Carney now, he was, he worked over on the coast. He's actually from Iowa.
Yes.
And so he has like he likes to ski, so I guess that would be his local tie. But, you know, so there, there are exceptions to that, but generally, yeah, if you've been around Eastern Oregon helps. But there are unique people like Brian that.
Who came out and they loved it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From Iowa. So, you never know what you're gonna, I mean, I don't know who's out there, um, at the moment. I I don't know.
I see a thought, Jay's.
Actually, I have a question for Ted. It just, to help myself think through this. Would you having a deputy with very little experience, like, like Nick was, what, is that really beneficial to you? Is you, you don't really need. I guess what I'm asking you is what level of competence and experience are you looking for?
If someone could just go into the courtroom and they do the appearances like on Monday morning, would be incredibly useful to me.
So, would it be really helpful for you to be, um, even if it ended up being, you know, people are coming and going. They're using us as a stepping stone, six months, nine months. Would that still be really useful for you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Even with the high turnover rate, if they were capable?
Absolutely. Because, um, at the mo, I mean, whatever the statute goes, ghetto machines, I got all kinds of support and, and folks that will help me get through, actually remind me to get somewhere. And it takes on freedom half the time. Um, but as far as somebody that can go in the courtroom and just do something so I can come down here or go somewhere else, uh, they don't. And Nick, then he wasn't even able to do that. He, he was still useful to me. And very, uh, did a lot of research and, and different things and did a lot of courtroom work that I, I had to be there, but the idea that somebody could go in there and get some stuff done would be great.
I think we could successfully recruit that type of person, I think, too. And we might have, you know, some turnover, but we could recruit that kind of person who's just looking for some experience. And we have one advantage about recruiting people for here for that type of position is they're gonna get to do a lot of things. You know, you go to somewhere in Clackamas County or Washington County, you might be doing one a really small particular thing.
Aspect cases.
For a long period of time and, you know, to come away from a place like this, you're gonna walk away with some really good experience.
Right.
Well, that used to be one of the big draws for Umatillas. Like you were saying, you, if you go to Multnomah, you're gonna be going to misdemeanor, you're gonna be there for a long time unless you really stand out to move into one of the different, Umatilla, sadly, they have quite a few, um, the DA, Dan, all, all he does, as far as I know, the sex, his duties in office, is he does murders. And so, as the DA, it, I can't remember what they told me, I must say, five, six, seven months, you are at least helping with a murder case where you go to Multnomah, that's never happened. Hope it doesn't happen here, but I, I wouldn't, I would, sure wouldn't put my money on it.
Now you jinxed this. There you go. Okay. Well, this has helped me a lot. We're in the discussion phase. We'll probably need to bring it up as a talk again. We're here to make an action.
Right.
But we're basically looking for, you know, some guidance, some, an, an idea, vision of where we're going. And we still need to build a permanent funding stream for it, um, even if it is, I guess, temporary position potentially. Or what could be a potential, uh.
Not temporary, but.
Well, yeah, you, I get, you wouldn't say temporary, but, um, even if it has high turnover, we need to be able to find permanent funding for it. Okay?
Sure.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. All right, with, uh, nothing else, is there any other public comment on any other matter?
Hey.
Yeah?
Is Jay still on?
Yes, he is. Sorry, Jay. You're out.
Yeah.
You're fired. No.
Yeah?
Yes.
Is there a way we can get ahold of some of the law schools and maybe do a work program?
You're talking about with not ungraduated?
Like an externship?
Person second year students? Or are you talking, I mean, certainly we could do that, yeah. Um, or are you talking about people that have graduated and passed the bar? Just looking for their first real job?
Either way, I mean, it'd be nice that, I mean, we, Ted could use the help and we could use the help and they could use it as lesson learned. I'm just throwing out options.
Well, and. Well, absolutely, if we have a chance to have another certified law student. Of course, I'm coming off of bitter experience, so. But at the end of the day, it doesn't quite get there. I mean, Nick having to do a lot of stuff, he did a lot more things than, I was certified law student in Portland and he did, he had a lot, he got, he often do a lot of things. But at the end of the day, it's all on my license. And if someone has passed the bar a lot and just having been this person, you got some incredible expenses.
Right.
I mean, just to pay the, your insurances and stuff, so you're very much probably not looking for much volunteerism, but maybe. Maybe somebody that didn't have, that had more money or whatever, did better with their money and was able to not come away from law school with the debt that is typical. But actually, if, if that person exists, that'd be awesome, too.
All right. Being nothing else coming before us today, we will recess this meeting until one o'clock today for a Blue Marmot goal exception hearing. Thank you all.
Mark, sit.